Good take, good call. I got first read.
All right, while we're disseminating some paperwork, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the trial state county commission to order. Appreciate everyone being here. Start off, I'll do the road call. Johnny Hurst is here. Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Pruitt?
Here.
Mr. Nolan?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
I forgot it's that.
Mr. Swaffer? And Baker's not here. And Mr. Harper?
Here.
So we do have five, we do have a four, and we still have one vacancy on the commission for the mayor and the county court. We do want to, at this time, recognize Mr. Swaffer, Mr. Dolan, since his mother-in-law passed, if any other knew Ms. Brad Crew, she was a very special lady, I really thought the world of Ms. Brad Crew. We need to just thank her for marking the trees at this time. All right, so we'll get going here on the agenda. Next up is the approval of minutes for the make-ten. They worry, made about, and everything. Did anybody notice any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, I would accept a motion to approve the make-ten agenda, I mean, minutes, or move. Motion by Mr. Harper. Grab a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pruitt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. It does pass unanimously. Any changes to the agenda or anything? Our agenda is set for tonight. New business. First up is a request by Tony and Trina Wood, the rezoning approval for one acre of a five-acre piece of property at 150 Walden Grove Road. They would like to rezone that acre from A1 to R1 in the fifth civil district as a gift for their son. Mr. and Ms. Wood, would you like to speak to this?
Uh, we'd not.
Could you just come up to the front, Lee, since this, this is being sent out to the county, so that way our listers...
Right. Yeah, our elders, we just want to give our son a piece of property, little house, nothing else but us. Nothing else. So just whatever the rezoning we need to do, I mean, if it's a five-acre tract, I mean, we're good with it. That's just our elders, give them an acre. I think maybe out there, acre or four, land. And that's just all we're hoping for.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Wood or, he says, Sam? Thanks, Sheriff. Sam, would you like to address this?
I've been doing a lot of digging and calling, and I found out today, which burned my assumptions, that was on, I don't know if it's a system, look through the search. So makes a, makes a tone call, but finally got response. This, if you look at the Highway 25, there's six lots right there on Highway 25, small. Uh, and there's Mark III. This went through for, uh, basically subdivided for, such as being built before there, and I'm reading, they got resented, or... Or... So I'm gonna dig, get that adjusted, but it was small. Parks 25, it's, again, the dates won't match up on the tax record for when those lots was created. They shouldn't have made grade it so small, which indicates that there's barriers in that. Five lots, we do small for zoning district. They were the size of R1, nothing. They didn't call in the actual surveyor that did it. It was resented sometime within here, 2005. Just gotta find a thing. That's why they were allowed to cut the, the six houses.
How far down the road is this past, uh, it's pretty much Mark, no, no, on passage Beaver or...
Straight across.
Straight across, straight across from Mr. Beaver. Basically, you think it's already R1?
It's on the corner R, so it's not necessarily spot zoning.
It would be at R1, it's already, gotta face it.
Are we all...
Right, the one across the street is R1. My concern was spot zoning, but this, like I said, the dates didn't match up on that to front six, when they constructed and lots were created, which indicates an error in that. And finally, the actual surveyor, I got response to that, that it was resented in 2005.
Somebody used somebody other than Farm?
No, the pharmacy.
Oh.
The pharmacy, but none of the records show. All around, that Mr. Farm had created lots in 2005, and he did today, and right, Jim?
Yes.
And it was Brad Crew in 2005.
So you recommend that?
I, uh, we've got the legal description, so I would recommend passing it.
Mayor?
Generally, what Sam just said, it's a, 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 so in this area, we, probably, it was, and then on that side, it's, it's a, 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 it's more of a question, me personally, to get some reference.
Nolan, do you have a question?
Like, it's like, it's like you hit the ridge.
Like, it's the side. But as I remember, it would be, this, here's the church.
Yeah.
And then here's, it would be going up there.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Ford, back years ago, would be, first, well, zoning, uh, left a spot in there for apartments. So I assume that's R3 that you're talking about, Sam?
It's, and it's been a...
Close to the holder property.
This would be to the left...
Yeah.
Of that, coming back to...
Big storage of the holders property there.
Where they cleared it all years ago.
Yeah.
So...
Mary's got a map in here, if you know, but you see, it's an experience, see new apartments.
There's, there's, I should have...
It has actually, so many on that block.
It's got all the...
There's already apartments next door that are, that have been approved, Jason Ford to do, uh, I think it's five places, that he's gonna do, that's already been approved and passed, and it is R3.
Is it gonna take away any C2 commercial property?
So that, well, that's what he just addressed.
Yeah.
Why don't you say that again, Mr. Ford?
We're looking at the front two, front two lots, C2.
Okay.
So he's talking about leaving, they've been two lots on 25, that he wants to leave for the burn.
Yeah.
And then develop a subdivision behind it.
Okay.
Then we have apartments, I'm understanding.
Subdivision.
Jason?
A judge. So Lewis still out?
No, Craig.
Wait, wait, excellent answer.
Yeah.
You have questions for Craig or...
And if they, if the C2 lot, that's, may have made requests of Craig to leave two lots in the front, if that is a deterrent factor. For legal description for those two lots, or the commission.
Yeah. I think that's your future plan, that at some point in time, Craig, we should, they could always come back and push the...
I think we should have that.
But most of the...
And then work.
The ball's still in their pool. For future, this mate?
And speaking to retail strategies, that's a consulting group that, and they'll spend a lot of money on hiring to do retail recruiting. This is kind of area they look at, given all the developments popping up with that apartment complex, they thought this should be an attractive area, so keep that C2 in the front. If you're okay with a more partial contact information to them, because right now, when the first year of the contract, you're doing down the town revitalization, the year two, they're looking more towards retail. And I'd like to add your contact information, so we can reach out to you, especially if you're building subdivision here, apartment complex there. They were talking where you get more residential apartments, you have more license to do it, add something, put them in a store or something, that maybe you wanna go right there, go off the highway.
I think should be put wording.
He wants to, he wants to vote for, leave the board with a legal description.
Yes, if the property lot.
I, for the rezoning, I have a lot next door, so let me R3. In discussion, Craig, we agree that two lots in the front should be left, C2. That's a great point, too, unless if that is a deterrent factor on y'all's rezoning, then y'all can request him to do a legal description to match that.
Well, potential for business, I mean, it's, I would just, I mean, probably, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a...
That, that lot, it does have the potential for commercial, but if you know the lot, it's on a bluff, they had to jackhammer out the roof, and go in there. So it is a tension, but any business that does buy those two lots on the side are gonna have to flat.
Whether it's real or...
Nothing, I mean, it doesn't...
There's always a D9 doctor that's here.
Any, any questions for Sam? For, for Mayor?
Uh, I saw what this Sam is talking about, I see the brothers, I, in front of it there. One, I'm looking at the description, C2, we don't, they agree with the C2s. What they have always, like, say...
C2, yeah, C2, without that, for clarity, the legal description, fire, should, should , should, should, yes, there's, 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 there's a property section.
Probably a future, a future, that way you've got a full legal description to go by. If they all own all the property, like, it's really not that big a deal, we don't have to have to survey it.
So we just need to get a description. The description is necessary, it's a... That can be done in part where, previous use of, required for the description, ongoing and, and...
Well, I think, I think it's time that somebody just put it in at motion, uh, it's got a couple of months anyway, first and second treaty with county court. It's not, does it come, they're, they're the number one... What do you think, Mayor?
The man who came up before, they didn't have the legal description until it was the second treaty, so...
Right.
Yes, I, 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 You know, one thing I have, we had a percentage wise tremendous growth over the past seven years. But to me, it hasn't changed the feel of the county. And that's, to me, that's always been important. I hope that we can continue to develop that, but, uh, obviously, we'll have to look at each entity as it comes up, but that is one thing I found, with as much growth as you add, uh, I think we've been able to retain character to this point. Anything else, Sam?
That's it, let's see, anybody else have questions?
Questions for Sam? Questions for Mayor?
Most of you, Jim.
We have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Carter, did you hear something?
I had two things, it was just...
Okay.
Not sure where I messed up. What was it, Jim?
Press queue, out here, across the highway of Parker, and the 48 blocks out here, across this path to school, where this guy, he's on.
Oh, beside the body shop?
Yeah.
Okay. I've got a question, too, about that one meeting, so it's a personal thing, it's not... I've got a question too about that from the meeting, so it's a personal thing, it's not.
Jim, that's not, I like that, I'm so sorry.
I know we came in and I talked to you in the office about him, you made some suggestions, and I corrected, made some corrections to pre-escalated.
Yeah.
So, I think you're gonna need to this, or is that something? Members, somebody could make a motion to add to the agenda. Well, you gotta make sure, Sam, I gotta, it's a pink, I mean, good picking that.
Well, at least they're off. It's good that, at least. They're not fired, I'm gonna get to see them again, so.
Okay. Remember y'all been thinking about if you would, uh, once Sam gets his research in here, if, as a body, which is a want to add this to our agenda tonight. Let's see if he said, uh, where we can do this, you know, professionally. Hi, Eric.
I have the plaques, I have reviewed the plaques in the office, uh. I don't know where I slipped that leaving it off, but I have both plaques, and I have, uh, verified all measurements on it with Jim. I don't know where I slipped that leaving them off, though.
I'll figure the minutes out, maybe, 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 prayer, and then I, I have a, I have a, right, right.
I was just confused by the sitting here, because I know that came, it's more of a common crack, so I was like, well, Jim's here for crack.
No.
And, uh, it had crossed on mine, it was that other thing. Mayor, do you wanna look at these first? I'm worried for you, so.
If you still want it, something, uh, with a full-size copy.
Okay. We've already reviewed and added everything we need to add. These are preliminary, Mayor, you have to review the wording.
That's fine, we would like changes, I mean, the files, the files will not look as, oh, we don't think. I mean, this is a preliminary, there will be changes between now and the final, I have no doubt.
This is the same one that came forward with three thousand, we saw.
Where the rest will be commercial, I'll wear.
Yeah, this is, yeah, y'all saw this one, actually. Well, twenty five there.
Rolling Meadows is the one that's outside Blaine's.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that's just a very. I wish we knew this.
It's all pinch managed, though.
St. John's and Highway Department program.
Yeah, this is one, it's already, the houses are already there, so this is gonna be some more.
New phases to that one beside, in front of the highway road.
Yeah, 'cause here's the ones that are already there, and this is what they're proposing.
Okay, so it's just another, another phase is opening in the next.
I knew there was, back in here was more, phase three, yeah.
That development, really, really, very, very. Are you with that development service? It looks good.
Now, uh, so, Kimmy's got some kit, number thirty eight. Please, thirty eight, thirty nine or thirty eight, once.
Yeah.
Mayor, do you feel comfortable? Since they're eliminated.
Wish they'd been added to the agenda for the year of the meeting. I mean, this, this, this just expanded what's already there.
Yeah.
I'm a little bit worried about this one, building a house under transmission line, but.
I'm sure that's just how long.
That?
Transmission line.
Where you can build a house under transmission.
It's all that high, uh, they'll have to offset, but they'll go.
You can't, you'll have to build it outside.
Yeah.
Outside the area.
It won't be, you know, to be built under the transmission.
There, there.
And they have, they have.
Just have a lot of yard over here.
Yeah, this one's getting it off set.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, they come, they come out with a laser at different times of the day and measure for temperature, and they see what the droop is in it. And that'll tell them how far it drops down, and then you got to be so many people. True. So, yeah.
Well.
So they have to do it for Tri-County all the time, so if Tri-County runs a pole underneath it, they'll have to come measure the droop at the highest point of the day, and that'll tell them how far it drops down, and that'll tell Tri-County how low their line has to be to stay away from it.
This, one, two, three, four, five, kinda, well, it's the boundaries, and that's the line, so, really, don't take this one.
It's gonna be T V A, that's gonna tell them whether they can do it.
That's why I would say I hope it's last, uh, say, well. Hey, when it's T V A, uh, every, I, I'll just.
Yeah. That will move everything.
Yeah. So regardless, proven. Way to get out there, and the droop's too low, and they say no. So, it is.
They, they messed up six thousand acres, E V A'd it.
In the seventies.
It may not be.
The highway, the highway twenty five was.
No, but this is the most, it's not, so they can go. So, yes, so for my, why haven't that, I mean, is that everywhere? Just in the city?
So, the subdivision regulations were passed saying sidewalks, but the county and city ordinance is we have to adjust, yeah, so we pay like, inside the city. Subdivision, it's already been added, but it's.
But is that county law? I mean, it's subdivision.
Yeah, where the, the county court, uh, plan commission are still. Uh, trying to hatch out, but, but, but subdivision, it is, it's a.
Okay, wait, that's, that's not. Uh, not it, not it that way, but.
Well, these are preliminary, but.
Yeah, yes, I would, I would give a second. I did that one.
No, uh, the. Coats, coats meeting has not decided on the other. How we're going to approach it. I'm still waiting, I need to be set.
Well, before we proceed any further, the planning commission has to decide whether or not they would like to add these two projects to tonight's agenda, and if you do, then it has to be done by motion separate, right?
So, like, Crestview?
Both of them, well, you can do one item, you can do both items, whatever.
So, but add both to the agenda.
That's your decision.
Be making an amendment.
We're amended the agenda to add these two. Mr. Harper makes a motion to amend tonight's agenda to add question two acres and rolling meadows, preliminary plaques to tonight's agenda, you have a second. Second by Mr. Noller, all in favor say aye. Any no, say no, any disapprove? It is passed, we will add this to the agenda. Since this gentleman's already here, let's do Crestview first.
Okay, I think I'll, I'll step over here, uh, this is, this is the coach, uh, Crest, section two, section three, we'll have a plan of Crestview. And, uh, this is out here, this is all, after all.
About to make somebody write out.
So, if I want to start or change something, or subdivision weights. Right? That's something you're gonna have to look up, ponder.
Very simply, like.
Well, again, it's approved, it's a preliminary. I did your question. You understand the question, didn't you?
I did, and we would, we would, we would agree with the question, we, I mean, sidewalks there are sidewalks that are going nowhere. I mean, so we would prefer not to put them in for open reason.
Had to do with the plus the mailbox, right?
Now, we can, I understand how the mailbox thing goes, and we can do like, I mean, I know they haven't got it constructed yet on, uh, hybrid grids, but we can make a pull-off of the mailbox, like they're doing up there, inside the right of way, have a full three or four car pull-off, where that box can be constructed against the curvy.
One of our biggest concerns, and our sidewalks have been robbed of, is the safety factor of people, especially elderly people, because they get older and subdues.
Yeah.
That have to walk, get their paper.
Yeah.
That type of thing.
I guess.
It's not just somebody pulling in and.
I understand, I understand.
Just to let you know that, that's a major part of the discussion on sidewalks, is, is.
I, I totally understand that, and, uh.
On the conversation, we did, meant, the, the, that, thirty, plus three boxes.
Okay.
The official issue, okay, I.
Okay.
Now, if I, be like, on that. I'll make sure you get another copy of this.
That's fine, that's fine.
It's not a, uh, specific size, uh, well, it's just kind of, yeah. So, um, again, the last pass, uh, it just took a four, uh, first round.
Yeah, I can understand, I'll say it, but, I'll say it a lot better with an easy, big one, but.
Question would be, the big question is. Are we gonna, yeah.
Well, I think we could really, our, works is, if it's in the works, personally, I'm not going to think any. I say that, that's why we put it in, was safety. I think it's in the safety, but if, uh, if we don't, if they, if, if it comes back that it's a decision of the commission, since the first phase doesn't add in there, then it'd be the real fact issue, how, like, we can see, is that our decision, or is it a decision of the papers?
Jim, was there already a plaque for this?
I know, but I have a.
Was it, was it already approved when we were adjusting the baseline?
Okay, well, that. Yeah, I mean, so, yes, so twenty years ago, we had a preliminary approval. We are wanting to adjust the phase line, so it was approved in two thousand and one, and all that got built was phase one. So, I mean, the reason we had to come back tonight is because of preliminary, after so many years, you got that.
You're adjusting base.
Yes.
Sorry.
Oh, oh, they took the questions, I heard it for the conversation. The what, Thomas?
Well, as we said, with the, uh, fire, uh, they do this one.
The question I was asking was, and it does still fall under the purview of the ordinance that you both asked, uh, they're gonna look at it, and they come up and will find it. It really doesn't matter tonight, except we kind of put, uh, this gentleman on notice that it could be added too, should we want to continue with, with the development. We just got, the later, we just didn't have enough time to get all our ducks in the rove, just tonight, you know? So I think we can, if the will of the commission is to do the head, with the preliminary approval, we, we still have time to prove, to deal with that.
So the mention itself work, I, I need to know your questions, it's my fault, I didn't get there, so. We can make a list of questions that Joe want, thanks, answer. If you see the six posses, so, yeah. We call it like that.
We'll be thanking you, any questions, you know, Sam, through research. We can mail that out, and since we have so many members out tonight, we would, they're normal, they, they would need that also, so, I don't know what's going on.
So we can give you preliminary plan for tonight, but before we have the final, like, decision on the side, to my understanding.
Get our answers for our question, and then, uh, right, that would be one odd. Because that answer may affect this gentleman, the way he was over with, and all of that too, so we, you know, we want to be this, uh, time conscious as possible. All right, everybody understands what's going on. So is anybody gonna make a motion for preliminary plan approval for the next, the phase two and three of Crestview? Which is something we all are aware of. Would anybody like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, Johnny, waiting for it.
I'll say.
Motion by Mr. Stevens, second by Mr. Noller, for preliminary plan approval. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no, it does pass. Next, we will look at rolling meadows. Thanks, sir. Rolling Meadows is the, uh, development that has already been approved by the county commission on both ratings and everything, so it's, it's completely ready to go. And Mr. Carmen's here to speak to you, Jim?
Uh, I don't really have anything to say, we're all done with this over, uh, we're glad to answer any questions. Understand, thank you a lot, all of the night, that is not a problem, we're just on approval to move toward the next phase, go ahead and get our geography and our, that's what we're looking at for tonight.
Questions, Mr. Carmen? Yeah, because this would follow up your sidewalk.
I mean, that's, I'll be taking care of it at the final.
Right, right. Jim, you might have to work, that was approved either at least two months ago, if not.
That's not, that's not, not, not an issue.
Just for your knowledge.
Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Carmen? All right, Sam, you'd like to speak to this?
Like Jim said, we've already repeated plans together and revised and made changes. They're supposed to finalize the whole thing that's left, it's me to get them to Mary, except that I heard we did them for a while.
So we put Mary on the spot tonight. Sorry about that, Mary. I'm sure Mr. Carmen will respond, any may have all for any question we can have moving forward. If you have a question about that power transmission, Jim answered that earlier. Can't build under those, and then like 100 foot right away, so, you know, don't get excited about what you see, that's not gonna happen. Mary, would you like to say anything about this, I know it's short order.
I can sort of say that there's needed meaning for the areas, obviously, we're careful. Instead of sidewalks and the plus sidewalks.
No, that's, that's not, we totally understand that, that's, that's, that's not a piece, we're just, we're just looking for. As I said, this is just, this is just preliminary, we like whatever type it is we need to like as we get to the final.
Right, yeah, and we'll see if the policy has changed or not, you know?
So would someone like to make a motion to, if someone makes a motion to approve this, I would just say, add into your motion that all variances and regulations are here to. I mean, they're gonna do that anyway, so it's not, it doesn't hurt to just put that, since this didn't come up kind of last minute.
I like the motion, we recommend this request, the picture of each variances sidewalk, plus the sidewalks, okay?
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Teasley, and a second by Mr. Harper. Any other discussion? Questions? Seeing none, all those that approve of this, please signify by saying aye. Any? Note, open note? It does pass. Kind of jumped up on the seat. All right, anything else to come before the plan? We should go back to my motion, Mary.
Yeah, I just, I just.
Motion by Mr. Noll to adjourn, is that the second? We are adjourned. Thank y'all for coming here, I think we had a forum and was able to.
For all of you for showing up.
I didn't even sweat my heart out, tired, I sat there to cheer if I had to sleep. My son called me and talked to me forever. A warm ear out.